At least I've been everybody.
Okay. That is in progress and now we can do this. All right, Moes, you want to call the meeting to order?
Okay, officially call the meeting to order. Right. A work session, but no decisions will be made, so it's a work session.
Okay, so I'm just gonna start by going through all of the online survey results. If you guys have questions, obviously, just let me know, we can stop. But we got about 207 responses. You know, obviously, I wish we would have had more, but we put it out in as many places as we could. We asked people to do it. We said there were gift cards involved and that was what we got, so good enough. Um, let's see, yeah, most people did have a library card, people did not. Um, let's see, how would you prefer to be informed about the library's upcoming programs or services? Most people said the library website, which is good. Melissa, our new adult programmer, has been really keeping up with it. She's creating new webpages of information, so we're hoping to get some information out there. Social media, I was pretty surprised at, but at the same time, we have been growing our following, which is doing really well.
And I think a lot of us who are on social media share.
Yes, yes.
Which helps.
That's how we get a lot of people on our programs, is sharing something to someone else. Email newsletter, we just started these back up again. Melissa's been doing a really good job, so hopefully we'll get more information in those. And we're trying to send them out about once a month, just with everything that's coming up. In library bulletin board, we put up after this survey, so that's super.
There's always been stuff around though.
Yeah, but we wanted to have more like a central location where people could look instead of having to walk around the entire library. Flyers, posters, staff, and then I don't need to be informed, which that could be the people without the library cards.
Some little sleeves for dressers next to the door.
Yeah, so we're actually getting a small table that's gonna go right underneath it.
That would really help too.
Yes, that's enough. Yes, that's where we'll put like tax forms, things like that, so we'll definitely put some of that up there as much as we can. Uh, which services did you and your household use during the past year? Looks like checking out materials was the biggest one, attending programs. Libby, which this is an interesting thing right now, because we kind of knew that we'd have a lot of physical checkouts, but now we're having a lot of digital checkouts with the same budget money. And digital books are much more expensive than regular books. And also, once you buy a digital book, you have to like renew it like most other books. You get it, you know, two years or whatever. So this is an issue we're talking about link wide right now. Oh, yes, very expensive too, and because we have more people wanting it and the wait times are kind of long. We've been increasing that budget every year, but that much cost somewhere.
The regular hard ground.
Yeah, yeah, a digital book is usually anywhere from like sixty to a hundred dollars. And you obviously don't get a million. Sometimes you can buy more, but that's not expensive. Um, we've got a lot of people using our computers and wifi, study rooms, researching homework assistance. So this is about what I, what I expected. Nothing too crazy there. Top services that we provide, one is providing library materials. This is super good to see, because I know a lot of people are saying like libraries are irrelevant. Everything's going digital and it doesn't always mean that. Then we've got providing reading recommendations.
That's a lot higher than I thought.
And I will tell you too, library staff are working on basically a bunch of social media posts where we're gonna be answering these and then showing everyone how we're answering. Like you said, you wanted this, this is how we're doing it. You said you wanted this, we actually already have it, it's on these.
That was one of the comments I made about mine, that it needs to be that you ask for this, again, it exists. It needs to be that.
Conversation.
I saw several, quite a few comments about homeschooling. And we wish, I know I wouldn't have really had. But this is sort of the sort of the homeschooling section.
They never get checked out.
They don't get checked out.
Yeah, no, we, every, every reading report, we read more books from that. Well, it's not really a collection, it was a small area. We also got a homeschool magazine that never got one checked out. So, yeah, and we do, like, we do special storytimes to homeschooling groups. If they come in here, especially Philip, we'll do a lot of those things for them. And there's different things that we can do for them, but.
Many years ago that there were people who kind of led, who were, kind of led the homeschooling groups to. Me and Irene, that we offer things that they ask for, but the leadership that, so their kids are all graduated by now. Well, it doesn't seem like it's nearly as organized as it used to be.
Uh, yeah, it seems like it's a lot of different groups, which we do, we see a lot of different homeschooling groups in here. But one of the things that we've had issues with is certain folks asking for homeschooling curriculum books. And we can't do that and we don't do that. You know, like, we don't, we don't get textbooks, we don't get other educational, like, school books or anything like that.
That's supplemental stuff.
Yes, and a lot of the books that have been requested to are books that you can only get on this one website. If somebody creates homeschooling materials, when it comes to the public library, we don't have the funding to help with that. That has got to be.
Well, yeah, this is supplemental stuff.
Yes, exactly. Um, let's see, technology help, childhood literacy, all that good stuff. I don't think there was anything that really jumped out to me on here, but this, this very high number was encouraging. So I think continuing to put budget money into physical and digital materials makes sense. Um, this is super interesting to me, because I did bring data for you. And Saturdays are our least attended open days. Like almost every single week. So, and actually, our busiest days are usually like Tuesdays.
I had a nice lady meet me at the door Tuesday, and she said, you're not open. When did they change the hours? And I said, oh, March. I said, I said they changed the hours a little later, so that we could be open on the weekend for people that are coming in the weekend. So she was placated by that, but however, I was stunned with, you know, draws. Still had somebody who was surprised if they locked in the door.
Which we still, like, the building opens at nine, but the library doesn't open until ten. And so I will say like, yeah, we've, we still had issues with people saying we wish you were still open from nine to ten. And I'm like, trust me, I get it. So that's kind of, you know, one of the reasons why we want to do this, get community input, but.
I wonder if a lot of people still want to know this. I mean, it's not like Saturdays are just a busy day for families.
Yeah.
You've got a family and kids in sports, somebody's gone.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Two errands and that's it, your, your whole day is over. Yeah, so that's one of the things that I want to come from this meeting, is if there's any data in here and you're like, oh, that's interesting, I will show you the actual data that says yes or no to whatever is being sent here. So Saturday, it's not every single week, but I would say ninety-six percent of the time, Saturdays are our least attended day. Um, what time do you normally use the library that, I mean, this was fairly even for the most part, you know? Two to four is also kind of interesting to me, because I would say that the three to four hour does tend to be busy with everyone getting off of school. Two to four, I guess maybe people were just voting for that, because three to four was in there. But this seems about right to us. We get a lot of people in the morning. This six to seven hour too, I do have some data from that.
Yeah. We're near, we're near.
Yeah.
On Tuesday, and it's, it's either little kids or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing that concerns me about, and though I absolutely believe that we have to be open in the evenings, is that if you've got, like, our one-year-old granddaughter sleeps from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So by ten o'clock comes around, she's already in the morning nap, it's the early morning hours. But, you know, if you've got a mother with small children, or a father with small children, that's the time that it's really, by nine o'clock, you're like, yeah, put them down, some books, yeah, toys and stuff like that. And then at ten o'clock, take them home, give them a snack and put them in bed, that type of thing.
So that, that is the issue, is, you know, sliding the hours later. If we're getting this chunk of people, but now we're losing these people. Yeah. Here at ten o'clock. Oh, yes, our mornings are very.
Good, well, you want to capture them early.
Yeah, so this is not super surprising, doesn't really tell us much. Um, but this one, I wanted to show you some of the responses, so do the library open days and hours for work for you? We were very careful with how we worded this question, because we didn't want to give people the idea that we could open Sundays by saying, would you want us to open Sundays? And so, you know, we got a hundred sixty-three responses saying, yes, we're all good, fourteen no's, but either didn't say anything or their comments are in here. Non-answers, uh, this was like special characters that ended up going in there, so I don't know if someone actually responded or what. And then ten people specifically mentioned Sundays, which, you know, it's like four percent. So comments, we've got, we wish you were open later on the weekdays. Study rooms close at six forty-five. Opening date and time of the library, Sunday half day would be nice. Wish the hours were longer. Close too early in the winter, I'm assuming they meant the six o'clock hours before we change, but that wasn't just for winter. Yeah, yes. Yes. Yeah, we've got the Sunday comments again, screaming, help both the library open earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, open later Fridays, Saturdays.
Learn anything new by this.
Yes.
So what is, what's it, fifteen minutes, did somebody complain about?
This.
They couldn't get in fifteen minutes.
The study rooms close fifteen minutes prior. We have never locked this, the front door earlier than when we close, yes.
Okay, that's exactly.
And I, I know that, because I close up a lot of the days. We've never done that, that's, yeah. They must be, they must be referring to study rooms. And that's partially because, one, people don't actually leave fifteen minutes prior. Two, we've had ginormous messes that have kept staff here afterward, so on and so forth.
Makes sense.
Plus, we like to leave the study room doors open to hear them out before we have to close and lock them for the next day. Um, I do like that some people are like, we know, you know the problem. Who knows? But these were, yeah, these were the no comments. This was where the majority of the people said they wanted extended hours either before ten o'clock or after seven, or did mention Sundays. Yeah, like I said, some of these were kind of interesting. I have some data from that time, but like I said, our six to seven hour has the least amount of people and our seven to eight hour when we were open. You know, we had people coming in, but does it make sense to be open from seven to eight instead of nine to ten for, you know, three people? I don't. So that's what we're here to talk about, but wish it was open later, working time, don't have enough time to visit the library. Most of that, I think we've kind of covered here. Um, and then I'll go into more comments in a little bit. So we were talking about library programs. The times, at least for the most part, seem to work for most people. If they did actually answer this last bar here, was just people who don't go to programs and basically weren't answering. But library staff have been looking at this data, and we are working on programs to kind of fit the majority of people in here. So a lot of our programs, especially adult programs, are in the process of moving to later in the evening. Hopefully to get more people there. And then Karen is still coming up with the same issue with teen programming, where the young teen programs are actually starting to get well attended. Like we did a bracelet thing in here the other day, and there was twelve people, I think, which was a really good number for young teens specifically. And then the older teens are really just all about under the dragon. Saturdays, they end up having to close, close it off to more people. But we're, our teen intern starts next week, and one of the things that we're gonna have them work on is researching what kinds of programs we need to start adding, what time makes the most sense, how to reach more teens, get them in here, and so on and so forth, so. Yeah, yeah.
More to whatever, greater extent.
But see, that's why looking at things like this and doing like just the really weird out-of-the-box programs, teams like that. So we're trying to figure that out. Um, but for the most part, none of the other information, at least here, surprised us. Types of events, this was kind of interesting. Life skills was very high, which is why we're about to have a series in the fall on financial literacy. So like, how to invest, how to save for college, how to budget.
I thought this was one of the most interesting questions.
Yes, it, it surprised me what people didn't choose and then what people did choose. But for arts and crafts, we are starting to do more of those programs. We now have an adult art cafe, and then there will also be an adult, like, lead art-led program in the fall. Events about books, we're gonna be doing a lot more, uh, we're gonna be having a lot more speakers coming here that both the book note given us will be helping to pay for and have books for. Um, and then we'll figure out some other things to do with this as well. Health and wellness programs is also pretty interesting, so Melissa's working on some ideas for that. She also has really good ideas. Some of them I can't share with you, because they're not solid yet, but I think you guys are gonna be very excited with what we have coming up. Um, job searching or career development, I think a lot of people don't know what that means, so we'll show them. Technology programs, music or performing arts, the life skills thing, um, I thought was super interesting. It was the highest number and.
Got the maker space too.
Yeah, so, yeah. We're gonna be doing so many things like that, and one idea that we actually got from an on-call was there was a library, it wasn't in this state, they were doing a life skills series. And one of the, one of the programs was how to change a tire. And they literally took everyone outside and someone from like Schuader or something like that showed them how to change a tire. I was like, that is something that even I would be there to attend. So just little things like that, so if you guys have any other ideas, we're planning to start something like that.
I would say that we've got several hard, got a star where you're in town, and they had guys there that. Yeah, I, well, they actually have two new head of stuff.
That one, oh my gosh, she was.
Yeah, she, yeah, she used to give me advice and sometimes I didn't need, but.
I didn't want to know. Yeah, but.
I don't want to change the tires, so I have trouble.
But what if they're not around? You don't.
Circle is always around.
Actually, it's probably a good idea to go where you can have all that.
Yeah.
Um, but some of the other stuff here, nobody really quite cared about. So, you know, we might come back to that another time. So just some, some good ideas so far. And then this was that final question, I wish Canby Public Library would. And we got a lot of positive comments, and then we got a lot of comments of people saying, I wish you'd do this. And we actually do already do it, so that's why we're gonna do this to means of like, we do do this, it's on this day. Um, did, was there anything at least in here that you guys saw that?
Well, we had so many questions about knowing where stuff was and not being able to find things. And it made me wonder if we, I, I know you had an open house not very long ago, but I wondered if we had a, an open house, a tour of the library. Not, not necessarily an open house, but.
I think it's more like regular orientation sessions, like new user orientation. Do you know how to, or the, or a question is, do you know how to do this? Do you know how to do this, you know, come, you know? And they get people to respond to, no, I don't, how do, how do I get Libby on my phone or my iPad?
How do I put stuff on hold myself? How do I check to see if something is in the library? Yeah, we started doing the social media series about that, but obviously, a lot of people are not on social media, or maybe when we posted it, they weren't following us at the time, so.
Put, put the answers to dumb questions on the board.
We want to, we want to create some sort of something on our website that answers some of that, like how to, you know, place holds and so on.
I know that before COVID, when I was the chair of the Friends, that seems like I was working with a lady at Hope Village that we talked about, like Lizzie going out and talking to some of these kids, because a lot of the older people don't understand the whole holds. Like, they expect to be able to come in the library, and it's still the same, he doesn't understand why he can't come to the library. Guess who does all these holds? He can't handle holds. And it's like, oh my God, they're further with me. But we had talked about doing that, then COVID hit, so I don't know, and I, you know, and I'm not chair of the Friends anymore or anything like that. So I don't know what happened to that, but.
Yeah.
It just seems like there's lots of opportunities to reach out to people to say, do you know, you want to learn how to do this stuff? You know?
Yeah, Melissa is in the process of trying, we're, we have a meeting next, I think it's next month, because of everything going on here, to talk about different ways to reach people that don't have library cards, that do, that don't know how to do things that you would think someone would know how to do. And honestly, at this point, I'm so far removed from not knowing anything about libraries. I don't even know where people would start if they were just getting their first library card, so. Ooh, maybe we could talk to people just getting their library.
I think it's new library orientation, you know?
Yeah.
That's, well, just, just a tour of the library.
Yeah.
Because people come in and they figure this section that they pick books out of and, and never get past that.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people come into the store and they slide and pull it. They go right to the section where they usually buy books and that's everything they look at.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you'd be surprised at how many things we don't know we have a collection for.
What about public school classrooms coming?
Oh, yeah, we did that once a few years ago, before COVID. But Philip does it now with the certain, like, he had all the second graders, and I want to say all the third graders at, at one of the schools that came in, so he does a lot of that here. The problem is, is they usually only have a, a short period of time to be here, so that the kids can also like look around. So there's a lot of information that has to get in there in like, you know, five to ten minutes of talking, so. Um, we're also talking about, so one of the city council goals is getting more of the community, especially the youth, involved in like what the city does and how the city runs. And so this past, I think it was April, they were doing a, I don't know if you were doing this, but they were doing a unit on civic engagement or something, government. And so all of the, this certain grade that was doing that unit came in here. And so we're gonna, we're talking with the city to figure out how we can kind of pair us with them and do like a whole week of classes, it's basically, so in the process of trying to figure that out. Um, some of these things, like increased number of bestsellers on Lucky Day, one budget is involved, and two, we actually have a lot of Lucky Day matches. So just, you know, educating people and maybe some of those sorts of things, getting better, some of the.
Very good.
Have more parking, you know, the, the public lot is really where people are supposed to be parking, but a lot of people don't know that, so. Education, becoming more perfect, not sure.
Consider how important Spanish speaking people into the library community, I agree with that one, that one is definitely.
It, that's one of the things that I think will be on every strategic plan, is to get somebody back. Um, let me volunteer, issue a gift card to me, I just.
I want to ask the city to put a sign on the public lot that says.
And maybe add some more spaces on, on the screen, only two, right? Is there three?
No, they're down this side of them.
Yeah, but they're not designated for libraries.
No, they are not designated for library, we.
So we use surfway.
The lot next to the movie theater, that's supposed to be the public parking lot, but yeah. Yeah, oh.
And don't, and don't go through it.
I know.
So, and I'm surprised they were, you know, not monitoring that themselves, because.
They don't.
Well, Frank, you know, passed away, so I don't know what they'll do in the future. Frank was very accommodating.
Well, I think that a lot of the people that do come to the library and park, I mean, I, I don't park in the Cuthbert parking lot unless I go to Cuthbert, but usually I come to the library first and then go to Cuthbert's. But I think that a lot of people do go into Cuthbert's.
We've talked about making more of these spaces that are literally right here on this wall, handicapped, because we have had people saying like, those spots are full and so on and so forth. So if we did change anything, that's what we've changed.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, they.
Their library has been the best.
Everybody goes, yeah.
Yes, they will admit that.
Yeah.
You ask them, they will admit that having a library here has really helped them financially.
Yeah, I mean, staff alone, I probably, I mean, there, I will say a sign though is a good idea to point people to where they're parking. So they can still park wherever they want, but at least saying like, that's.
Hard organ city over by the roundabout is that.
That is the public lot. Trust me, almost nobody knows that. I'm sure some staff doesn't. So it's something nobody believes.
It's a lot, lot, oh my gosh.
I know. What's the plan for the other side, the lot on the other side? They, so Cuthbert won't sell it, we tried, apparently, I've had several conversations about this. I don't know what they're sending it for, but it is not a very. Yeah.
Maybe in the future.
Stay in the library. That's what I've heard from many people, but that one involves a lot.
We tried, we tried to buy it.
Or, yeah, it's not even a parking lot.
There was a stamp named it buying it.
Yeah, yeah, they let us use it sometimes when we have, like, you did bottle rock, like, or something like that over there. They let us use it if we have stuff like that, but I'm not sure the plan for it. Um, it's always really hot in the kids' area, it's not pleasant, it's chasing and sweating.
I love that.
I, I understand, when I, if I shovel holes, I'm usually sweaty. That is something that I can talk to Dustin about, though. Are you guys ever like too hot? Because he, he can control it from his phone. Maybe, cool, maybe I'll.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd rather be.
That could be somebody who just runs hot.
Yeah, yeah, so bring back Legos at the library, that's Saturdays. Um, longer hours open earlier, have more parking available, have more adult gardening programs. Longer hours, open seven days a week, goat yoga. We're insane.
Have more Legos we can take care of. I'm just called the Lego guy.
We have like, we have like five teen volunteers who come here a couple hours a week and all they do is take apart Legos, so they can do Legos can happen the next week. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Offer Spanish lessons, we're starting to talk about bringing InterFamio back, which is like the Spanish English conversation club. We've had a lot of comments about people wanting to bring that back, so we're good for planning to do that. Um, offer special events for kids on non-school days.
Actually, you know, that's kind of quite an idea for days, but they, all the in-service days and the days at school, teachers don't see, well.
That's interesting.
Though, but they, kids don't go to school.
Philip usually does something on some of the days, but that's, I, that might be something to really look into, I like that. Um.
So it would have to, you know, get the schedule in advance, you know, and. Teachers, tell parents about it.
Yeah.
So that there's better, I guess, coordination with the school system.
Yes, which is also something Philip has been working on, is then having to reconnect with a lot of the schools. Um, just because people, you know, changed over and all that, and he's getting some responses. There's certain, certain schools are, he's having a hard time connecting this, so. I'm not even sure which ones, it might even just be one at this point, because he, he actually went to quite a few schools in the area and got a lot of the kids' reading logs before summer reading started, and then told them about the programs we have going on.
Libby, is that the old stuff using? It, it was broken for a while, it was down for a while.
Are you talking about the Link mobile app?
Oh, it was the Link mobile app that was down.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was down, but that wasn't, that wasn't us, and that was also not our, just our library system, it was a lot of library systems. Um, Libby does work.
What?
There's a book maybe?
We do not have a Bookmobile, that would be very expensive. Yeah, so let me, I'll tell you this, Malala got one with, um, some funding that they got, I think it was for the fund or something, back during COVID. To outfit it and everything, and this was during COVID. It's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Oh, and that's just to get it and you have it ready to go and it has everything it needs, that's not to stop. And so that was during COVID, imagine now with inflation, how much that is. Yeah, so anyway, I have, I would love this, this is one of the things that'll always be. Yeah, so anyway, I have, I would love this. This is one of the things that'll always be on the list. Cause we do have a lot of, you know, unincorporated areas and a lot of people I know that don't come here. Um, but I am actually gonna be meeting with the Malala and the Oregon City Directors to talk about how we can kind of coordinate. Getting more outreach down to some of those communities.
So I see a lot of like the homeschool comments up here and this, this, what bothers me is that. In the past, it seemed like somebody from the homeschoolers. Worked with somebody in the library to drive stuff. Just expect the library to drive stuff is bullshit, right? It's bullshit. You don't, you, you know.
What do you mean drive stuff? They want delivery service?
No, but they want, they want the library to organize events for homeschoolers. Say there needs to be something in the homeschooler association. Working with the library to make things happen, not just expecting the library to do it.
I gotta be honest, as a parent with kids in public school, it really ticks me off when libraries or other places cater their, their stuff just for homeschoolers. And my kids don't have an opportunity for that.
That's why we don't do that. And even when we did, like the books that we bought, we're not getting checked out. We got a loose one, I mean, we did not get one served. Um, and then also, so I said this earlier, but we do get a lot of requests for like homeschooling curriculum books for us to buy them. We don't have the budget for that.
Very specific what they want. There's no way you could do that.
Yeah, um, yeah.
I like the idea of making like the laminate room accessible for homeschooling parents type of meetings. I know that that used to happen here in a monthly basis.
Yeah.
I think that's good, a good use of resources, but it should be the homeschoolers themselves driving the activities. And utilizing the library.
If you were offering something on a, a public school, no school day, homeschoolers could participate then too. Everyone would.
Yeah, that's the thing, is we, we have to cater to everybody. Yeah, that's, that's the goal. Right, then again, I always say this, cause Philip. Does it too. He is one person. We are, he does so much, I can't even believe it, but. He can't do any more than he's doing. So that's what you gotta think about.
Commerce, but then that was like really low on the list of like what type of events, well, I guess it's adults we go to in your household, but like. A homeschool book exchange or something like that.
Which, they could always create those programs and just have them here.
That's what I'm saying. They should drive it.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah, and we'll do what we can and what we have the capacity for.
Support.
Yeah. Um, what else on here? Advertising, fashion story.
Oh wait, can I laugh at one?
You can always laugh.
One fifteen. Well, both to enhance learning for children literacy.
What makes the purpose of all of those books?
I think that was one of the gift card. Anywho, uh, have more video games. We don't have any video games. You can check them out from the other libraries, but. Um, they've been having massive issues with people stealing them, selling them to GameStop. And they're super expensive.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, would be available for everyone. I'm not sure what that means. If there's a glitch in question, not change, be closer to my house. Have more activities like Malala does. Also, the library would announce in advance when it'll be closed for.
It does, it does, announce in advance. You gotta be.
We.
Pay attention.
It's, we, we shoot for a month.
Um, so I.
Of notice.
So I noticed that, um, the Campy Herald, the whole, that was all sold. Is that gonna affect, cause they've done a really good cover of the library. What's going on?
They, yeah, we have someone that I think Melissa talks to to get events and everything in there, but I, I don't know.
That whole group of newspapers has been bought. I mean, we get it just because. I got it when we were friends at the library, cause John Baker did so much for the friends.
Yeah.
And I just kept it, even though it, it takes me all two minutes to read it, but um, the. They do, they're, they do a lot of, they put a lot of attention onto the local libraries. They, they do a really good job of that. And so I was just wondering when they sale of those, that newspaper chain. The Pamela Media Group, excuse me, has been sold to some group out of the South. And, um.
Let's see if I can get.
Yeah, that's kind of a bit of a concern.
Especially because I feel like the last year we had a lot of stuff in there.
A lot. I mean, that's actually what I, the reason I get it is I look and I brought it to meetings before.
That's, that's true.
You know, they, they actually do a lot, just not just the campus, but the, the service area.
Yeah.
You know, Malala and Blackburn and.
That's how a lot of people found out about the seed library.
Yeah.
Went through that. We haven't even launched it. While we launch it. Um, more, have more in the kids area. If they're talking about toys, we do, so Philip has a schedule. He puts out this kind of toy on Mondays, Tuesdays. And I will tell you, we are this close from taking all the toys away because they don't clean up after themselves. I had to spend almost an hour of my time last week collectively cleaning up after everyone.
Do we put signs and say?
There are signs, unfortunately, yeah. I, like, we want to provide things and so Philip and I think somebody else talked to one of the late committees and said, what do you guys do when this happens? And they said, you take the toys away for a while. So we might do that.
What would happen if they had to come to the desk and check the toys out, so you knew who had them? And that's an extra thing for you guys to have to do.
Yeah, but see, that, that's a.
I know.
I like that.
Only one person, but it would be easier to check the toys out than pick them up.
And then you could revoke their right to.
Where there's something kind of sobering about having somebody knowing.
Yeah, so these are the people who don't teach their children and pick up toys at home, so they're bringing to the library.
No, but you know, there's, I can understand how if people come and the toys are laying out.
Yeah.
They think it's okay to.
Yeah.
Tell them.
Yeah, we are, are custodians. They were having to clean it up and then they complained about it, which I understood. And then, you know, then we had to start doing it and then now I'm complaining because I just, it's, it's not like it's a couple pieces. It's. So, yeah, we'll, we'll see.
And the whole providing children activities during the summer, well, it's so hard to provide activities during the summer where people here and gone and here and gone and here and gone.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
That's why I like the program of just picking up stuff on a Friday and then you have an activity for a week. And then if you're going to the beach for a week, your kid has an activity and.
Yeah, that makes sense. Fantasy section. Uh, the paperbacks are the only section that are by genre, but there's a bunch of these books in fictions, but I understand. I will say.
They don't know how to search.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that's probably an education thing that we can help with, but I will say there, at one point. The entire fiction collection did have genre stickers and were interfiled and then they were actually pulled apart and they, most people just had a. A hard time finding anything, so I doubt we'd go back to that. Plus the stickers are expensive. Okay, all right, that's everything as far as the online survey goes. Um, but that was basically one part of our step in creating our new strategic plan was getting input from the community.
See, and the problem that I have with my survey is that we're not teaching people who don't know.
Which, and keep in mind, this, the strategic plan that we're gonna create is probably gonna be a two or three year strategic plan. It's not gonna be a full five, six year one because we are waiting for the community survey for that, hopefully get more input. And the community survey was built into this next coming fiscal year's budget.
We've only been asking for it for years.
We reached a lot of people, so that'll be good, but. So anyway, that's uh, all of the input that we got so far from everybody. And we will continue this conversation for our meeting next week, but I just wanted to get started with talking about the strategic plan. Our current or the one that actually inspired in twenty twenty-three. Uh, most of it was stuff that we could not do because COVID was smack dab in the middle and kind of gotten in the way of a lot of things. I also think that some of the numbers that were in here were good goals to have, but I'm not sure how they would have been possible. To kind of get to that point, so I like that we're shooting for the stars, but one of the really important things to be in the rest of staff. Is to make sure we're creating a strategic plan that. We can answer to, things that we can actually get done in a certain period of time, knowing the staff and budget constraints that we have. Um, which is super, super important to, to all of us. And that's why if you look at your, is. One of the last things, the CANBE strategic planning process, the very last, well, I'll tell you, the second page. Um, is just a little area that staff worked on trying to figure out what. Groups of this community, what population specifically that we serve, that we serve well, and that we're missing the mark on and need to. To focus a little bit more effort into. And then the very, very last page of that three-page packet. Was the SAP brainstorming session. We did two of them. And these were the goals and priorities on the left that we had all collectively come up with and thought like, you know. These are some things that we could include potentially. And then on the right, some of the issues that we just, you know, always keep in mind. So with all of this, I wanted to have the conversation of what do you guys think as far as goals and priorities? Go, what would you like to have included? What of this list do you want to definitely go in there and what is maybe? Some item that we might table or something like that, cause I don't, I think for us. This strategic plan, the previous one, it's a great strategic plan. It's just, it was. It was pretty much almost impossible just because of the time it came out and everything going on, so. You know, it's, I think we want all of these things.
Yeah, but it's a dream.
It, yeah, yeah, so see, that's, that's the focus of all of you. It's, it's to talk about what we need, what we want, and then how to get that done. And, you know, realistic timelines and what. So, do I have that on here? Oh yeah, I did pull up some of the CANBE census data, which was also. Pretty interesting if you scroll down. Um, I'll send you guys the link, but it is. Much more interesting than I honestly thought that it was. I pulled some snippets from. Here from you guys, but this, this is what we all knew. We have a fairly high Hispanic, uh, Spanish speaker population. Um, lots of military folks. I'm not gonna go through absolutely all of this, but. Um, these are some things to obviously keep in mind as far as creating programming and. Other things that we could perhaps have available for folks. Um, this was interesting. Yeah, I, I, I kind of, my mouth fell open.
Is that CANBE or Clackamas County?
This, according to the census is CANBE.
Wow.
Which I think a lot of people have had conversations about the fact that. Yes, yes. Uh, yeah, who knows what it would be now. Could be exactly the same, could be totally different. But.
What are you very surprised about? Just out of curiosity. I thought there would be a lot more for Trump. I thought this was a very, very Republican town.
Yeah, that's most of what I hear. Um, but.
I think they're just the most vocal.
This is part of it. Yeah, but I just thought that was kind of interesting, so.
It's, I would just like to point something out. Point it. Trump does not represent all Republicans.
I think we all agree with that.
Very definite. They are all in.
So my husband, he's a, a independent after January sixth. My husband has been a Republican in his entire life and I don't think I have that January sixth of it seriously. You're little with somebody who took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution against all enemies foreign and domestic. You think I'm gonna sleep with you? Sleep with you, you traitor? He's, he's the world's most frustrated Republican.
I'm sure it was.
He was.
Yeah, yeah.
My husband's very cute and more frustrated, I'm pretty sure.
We don't feel sorry for him. There's a lot of.
I mean, you think about the demographics of the town, no, I mean, in terms of. What, the educational level. Perhaps twenty years ago. And what, what it is now, it sounds changing.
Oh, so changing so much.
The people who are moving in and housing is getting more expensive by the minute.
Community summit meeting, by the way, is coming up.
The twentieth, right?
slightest little tiny bit of attention to anything in.
No, they're there to present. It's very annoying.
Yes.
Who's they?
What would you send that in? The, that group that.
It's, yeah, it's the people that the city, it's like a consulting firm of some sort.
Local city employees that are there.
They, yeah, the community part of the summit is like you, it, there's a very prescriptive plan and process. That you have to go through to do what they're doing. And one of it involves showing the community what you're doing, getting feedback, getting input. I, I only attended, I think, two of the meetings and then I.
Is this the, you know, you got Chris and you had talked about.
And it's all driven by the state.
Yes, yeah, yes. Everything is, yeah, they are going.
It's a billable land, step process.
Yeah.
And it's a ten to twenty-year deal.
It's a long time. There's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, but you have to think about. It's a long time, but I, I'm sorry, twenty years is not that long.
Okay, so one year now, exactly. But yeah, it's, it's very convoluted.
Mm-hmm. They've got it all figured out and they're, they're just getting us on board is what they're doing.
It's kind of the urban growth boundary and all that.
It involves that, it's highly, you know, emotional.
It is.
Yeah.
Let me look in here.
Yeah, I, what I objected to is the fact that it's really not about the community. I mean, they, they misinterpreted.
Yeah.
You know, like what makes CANBE great community? Well, you're not talking about what makes CANBE great community. You're talking, you have an agenda, you wanna push it on it, so.
Yeah, it's the twentieth from six to eight at Baker Prairie.
I got an email from the EDD person here, Eric, I got a girl in person here. Yeah, and she was, she started, you know, most of this.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Question about this.
Yeah.
Are these issues also priorities? So like my, my priorities is still the, the Spanish speaking staff or biocultural staff. Is that also over here already?
I think, I think this is what we really want to focus on realistically in the next few years. And these are just issues that are included in this, not necessarily like, you know, because of these, we absolutely can't do these. Both have things to think about. And I think a lot of these, at least budget and staffing and hours. Those three specifications, which are obviously the biggest ones. I don't think that those are going to get adequately solved unless we get more money to be a new tax district, which is what Eldan is, you know, starting to work on. I would think, I hope. Um, but again, one of the things that, you know, I, I feel like we've all talked about a lot is just the fact that. You know, everything is costing more money, personnel is costing more money. Now we have eBooks and digital materials in addition to physical materials, so it's like our budget is staying exactly the same. And we have more and more stuff, so that's why, you know, we end up having to cut staff or cut whatever. Um, so it's a, it's a realistic issue, but I do see a better future with that tax district. But we have to get every single board, community member, everyone on board. And the only way to do that is to not cover bullet wounds with mandates. It's like. For example, if we were to open, if we were to expand our hours and open from nine to eight. We're showing everybody that we can do everything they want. They're the same as nine. And it's just, it's. Exactly. But at the same time, you know, we wanna provide as much as we possibly can with what we have. So there's a balance, but that's what. I, I, I'm excited about the strategic plans. I think that we can really come up with something that will answer the needs in a way we can.
So is there any way we can tap into, we can leverage resources to provide help?
Yes, yes.
Native speakers who are able to teach.
That's one thing Philip is working on. With Totosi, they have a lot of volunteers. Um, some of them are Spanish speakers. I think one of them is actually translating a lot of our materials for us right now. Um, and we do pay her. Um, but he's also working on, I think he wanted to do some visits to one of these. I can't remember which one, but he was hoping to also be able to go to an assembly or something like that. Um, and speak and have that volunteer to also. Um, and speak and have that volunteer to also translate for him, so we're just starting to think about what we can do with what we have right now. Um, but yeah, open to any and all ideas.
Is there any other impression, is there any reasonable grade? Cost effective? Somebody you're on staff qualified to be in conversation and speak Spanish. As part of their job description?
We, so, yeah.
Basically, they have to. Of course, or they would have to be taught by someone in the community.
Me, so Lizzie, our old supervisor, she was fluent in Spanish, and we lost her, which is a big bummer. And then before Lizzie left, we did have a bilingual librarian, she was great. But she went off to get another job, and we did post that job, and we posted it twice, our bilingual librarian. And we got, the first time we got free applications, two were not bilingual, and the third one was bilingual in German. And then the second time we got nobody. And then we talked about making a library assistant job and all this other stuff, so. All, every staff member here either has or is in the process of taking like a conversational library Spanish class. Yeah, that, we're all trying to get somewhere with it, um, but obviously, like. If you're talking to anyone who may be fluent in that seven years, even if we start.
Yeah, I wondered how you bridge that.
Yeah, we're, so we do that, and then also. All over the computers, you can get translating things, so one of the things we do is we swivel our computer or the screen over to them. And we type out stuff and then they see, um, sometimes we try to say it out loud to.
Because it seems like if you could get somebody from, from British cultures or total systems in here, like, um, the first. The first Saturday of the month, somebody from, will be here from ten to twelve, and so. People who really struggle with English can speak with a native speaker and not have to have their child translate for them, which is. Kind of demeaning, you know, and that, that, it would be nice to, to get these, you know, to partner with these organizations. The other thing I pointed out before some of you got here, is that if we're to go after. Tax, new tax districts in the future, in the next few years, and right now, we need to be making sure that. Juanas Rotary, CANBE Center, British Cultures, Total Search, the Chambers, that they're all, that we're being a strong presence there with them. Um, so that the, the library is always brought forward mine, so that when we go after new taxes, yes, there's that feeling that this is really. We want to help the library.
Yes, yeah, yes, and I think that basically, let's say that's three years old, I think we need to start now. I mean, the Juanas, you don't worry about because they're big into the library, but everybody else, I think there's gonna have to be an effort made. To get to those, into those organizations. And we need to talk about the messaging, that's one of the reasons why directors are talking about this, is because we need to talk about. How to, how to tell this to people, and then to say, with a larger budget, we can open Sundays, we can get a bilingual librarian. We can get more materials, we can have less old times for digital materials, like, that's the important part of this, is to message. It's to send everyone the talking points.
Yes, yeah.
Not to say, okay, we're gonna do all of this stuff, even though we don't have the funding, and then we go out like, you already, you have already.
So I have, I have another question that I would like to know. From Marissa, so it really irritates me that I have a lot of friends who buy ebooks, but they're not donateable. So if you buy a book, you can donate it to the library, you buy an ebook, you can't, and why isn't there a. Strong pressure on these organizations that sell ebooks to make them so that they are donateable? You know, that, that, that's a, that's a huge question.
An interesting.
Trying, I mean, why?
You can loan. But you can, you can, you can loan them to one person. And like, I can loan you, but then I can't use it when you have it, and I can't, and it's gone from my library until you give it back to. Uh, so, you know, I say it's one call.
Yeah. Function.
I'll bring this up in the next.
Yeah, because it feels like the, the, we, the people, we, the public, should be saying, no, Amazon, I'm not buying your stupid ebooks. And can you make it mine, so that I can give it to a library? Because, I mean, ebooks aren't all that expensive on Amazon.
To a library, then the library is gonna distribute it to one, well, maybe not to a whole person.
Well, one person at a time.
It depends, yeah, if, if you pay this amount, then sometimes that's one check out at a time, sometimes for books that aren't like super big. You can pay the same amount and get five checkouts at a time.
But that seems to be something that we, the people, should be saying, this, it's not okay with me, you know, it's, it's mine, it's mine, and I should, I can donate.
Call Amazon tomorrow.
First, I, I do think. With a population. In my age group. Got, and a lot of people who have life experiences, businesses of various sorts. You've got secret agents, you've got teachers, you've got. But to volunteer, look out intentionally for volunteers to do specific, I suppose. I think, I think we find, I think we're, yeah, we used to do a lot of that.
I got it for the first time.
It'll be a month to get better.
And the, the advantage in that is it doesn't. Doesn't cost them. You'll find that half dozen people. Which wasn't much, but, um. But, but I do think there are new people that, and that's one of the ways to help people understand.
Yes, yes. I, that's, that is something I think this group definitely helped with, and I'm gonna work on it with. Other directors and other libraries, but really is talking about that messaging aspect of this, how we can spread that information. How we can get people like really clear. And to show them, there is so much more we could be doing.
Yeah, definitely. I don't think we've recovered people yet, you know, oh, I think that's gonna be.
Recovery is gonna take.
Ten years, yeah, you know?
Oh, yeah. I was at the HSE the other day, and the director I was talking to said that. I mean, a bunch of people were talking to someone who was like a disease expert or something like that, who said. We're talking ten years from now to when people are dying and. Feeling like, yeah. We just.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're not going down that road, all right. What else?
My goals, I like, I like, obviously on the goals of priorities, I think that the question is, how do you prioritize this stuff?
Exactly, this is the question, because we are, obviously, we are gonna want number one. So I am curious what you guys find the most important, and if there's anything else that we didn't include on here that I would also want to be included.
I would vote for education, but I don't know on education. Because I think we're still efficient.
Yeah, of course, community outreach in general.
You know, anything that we wanna add to that education, you know?
Yeah.
I think that would be my recommendation.
Um, programs where someone doesn't have to lead it, like, for example, like, this is not something, like, putting children's pages out.
Yeah.
Or the arts and crafts program that we have for the kids, they can come and do whatever they want, whenever, it's not on lead. Just can't stretch their legs. And be, and drop it whenever they have time. It's a really good way to kind of provide certain things when you don't have.
You're gonna try to put dollars to the new strategies, Russell?
I, I. Sort of, I, I want to figure out what the priorities are, and then what I'm gonna do is I'm going to come up with a draft. And then we can obviously all look at it and figure out what makes sense, what doesn't, and then. I, I can talk about coffee. Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, so I.
For timeframes.
Yeah.
So couldn't, could we? Seriously, could we have a day where we can have a certain time? And then you can have two or three volunteer people, they're serious, they're the person that. And then, you know, do some things like that, but aren't they costing them? Really increase our. Pushing the community.
Yeah.
Don't feel hopeful about suddenly trapping towards the high school teenage, because I do think that you. Most likely. And they'll go, they'll go into doing library resources, but they change, but they, they change it. It's the high school age kids are really resistant to, yeah, organizing activities.
Oh, yeah, it's not unless they organize.
So, I have, the second, the second bullet point, ongoing safety training for staff, I would say, ongoing training for staff, the safety is a fundamental element. That, um, to me, ongoing training for staff should always be on, on the list, keep people up to date, and safety is one of the things that they should. And anything else urgent that comes up, but, that, I, I would like that question.
Also do like the Spanish.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, number one, is educating the community and all library offering resources, you know, and everything over there, that'd be the first one, the second one. For me would be. Between twice between boost circulation and programming. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and all, all, when we're done actually getting everything together, I'll create a document if we wanna move some around.
And start some.
Yeah, so the homelessness initiative, we have a bunch of homelessness problem, this is a shabby.
So, the initiative, it's a big, yeah, it's growing essentially, but, and that's part of the reason why we got Brandon the behavior. Basically, that grant, which is the homelessness initiative grant, it's not just for folks who are homeless. To prevent that ever happening, it's to get, you know. To help them with job searching, to help them with, um, any other things that would, you know, like. For example, doing the financial literacy classes, budgeting, getting that education there so that doesn't happen. Or helping with resources to pull them out of a certain situation. It's just kind of, that was how our county worked together, is the police put for something, Candy Center put for something, we did. We made sure every single one of our pieces of the grant were different, but like, were connected. So you could go here to do that, and then you could come to the library to do that. So.
So I would stick that under library offering resources, frankly. I would think of something under number one.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna stay for number two, first, boost circulation, number three, excuse me. And then engage, reengage with those who do not use the library, maybe that's a couple of number three. That's my suggestion. Yeah, could either, yeah. Yeah, let's talk about some big parts and then we can.
Yeah.
Well, with the volunteer program could also go under number one, because I think that that's way of getting. You know? But then, the, the whole, the schools, again, that's good, number one or number three again. And I don't know what people meant by accessibility.
Um, there were a couple of different things, was one was making collections more accessible, one was, you know, more signage. More. Um, accessibility would include like the parking situation, um. Oh, yeah, it was, is pretty broad.
Okay, well, let's make that number four, because that, if we just need more detail.
Yeah.
Right.
So, just, so I'm clear, for number one, do we want to kind of make that a whole, like, educating the community on what we have slash outreach? Like it's together as one thing?
Yeah, because you need outreach.
Yeah, 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 definitely, I. Do not, we talked about. Oh, it's.
So we're here, not enough outreach, and this, that's, that's why I want to focus on the community groups, you know?
Yeah.
That, um, yeah. That's really a subset of number one, too, and it should be a own subset.
Yeah, and then if there's anything that you guys. Either saw on survey results, or just haven't seen on here, we can always add something to. Brainstorming.
And then get a.
Yeah, that's.
In all kinds of ways, I mean, I heard that. What's available, do you understand how things work?
Mm-hmm. I definitely think that that's, that is a good number one, and that was probably gonna be a nice long one, but. The good news is, is that's the kind of stuff that doesn't cost a million dollars to have you, but just have a big bang where.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't.
Big bang where.
You know, I mean, and just, um.
Yeah.
So, Marissa, you said you had to leave at five thirty?
Had to leave at five thirty on the dot.
Well, I have, I have an. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead. Never mind. Saturday is Marissa's birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Marissa. Happy birthday to you. And I wanna say also, I said that I would go work on a safety statement, and I had a, I struggled with it. So I asked Chrissy to take a stab, and then I found this document that all the city councilors have to sign. So this is Chrissy's stab, and this is the document that all the city councilors have to sign, and you know what, they gave us the words. There's like. After I pounded my head, oh, Chrissy's.
They're going through value in the process.
And then I looked that whole line, and I thought, these people already told us what to do. So, I haven't done anything because, um, I was.
So you said this was on the city's website?
Yeah.
Such interesting thing on here that I'm like, do you realize that it's on here?
That's what they're supposed to be doing.
Avoid and discourage contact, which is, which is defensive.